Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, everyone else in attendance. It's we've come up to another year for our safety hearing. Thank you, Darren. So in this presentation, we're just going to go over highlights from this current year as well as we're going to talk about the emergency response plans for the upcoming school year. So first things in here, the the safety plan needs to be reviewed annually, then it comes before you all. It needs to be available for 30 days for public comment and gets posted to our website. Because of our meeting schedule that we have, it's going to come before you tonight and then it'll come back up in August should you choose to adopt it. So that's why it has that note there by September 1st because we have to have it in place prior to September 1st. If you look down, we just had our last safety committee meeting for the year, we reviewed anything safety related. The main thing was the new requirement from last year, which was the workplace violence policy, went back through that, back through the assessments for anything that was changed. And I will briefly touch those at the end here. So in the committee, we reviewed that, we also established goals to continue working. We tried to build off what we have from the previous year. At the bottom, we have continued refinement of processes. I wanted to touch that one because we've we've made some good strides in this current year to include additional cameras for safety in public spaces. We've integrated a red-green clipboard throughout the district, which helps us throughout our drills for accountability of students where they are when we exit and evacuate buildings. We've also through the outlay projects, we've made changes for access control, so the double doors between the athletic and academic side here, as well as upgrades to the exterior doors there that are also part of our lock and access system. Last point for that is PPE that was purchased through PPS for any sort of special needs. So Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, it was there's like bike guards, spit face shields, certain things that are very specific for specific needs that were provided in order to to make things a little bit easier for the staff. So Penny, any questions? That is that is my present presentation. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Six o'clock. Tell us meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is saints, one nation, under God, into this law of justice for all.
Are you going up there to do the presentation?
Next, we will have the presentation and discussion of Internet connected device policy by Mr. Sertizio.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. So I'm taking the unusual approach to tonight for how we typically review policies to go over two policies that were were required to to adopt in some way, shape or form based on recent legislation. And the first one we're going to talk about is the use of Internet-enabled devices during the school day. I'm going to read the policy and not necessarily in whole, I'll paraphrase some things. We'll also talk about the results from the survey that was recently done that was sent to via school messenger to parents and staff, and there were also some students that responded to that survey. And then we're going to talk about the difference between policy and practice. There is a little bit of a difference there. Policy, just before we get started, is really high level and practice follows what a policy that's adopted, including the code of conduct. They include the code when I talk about practice, okay? So the district consulted with local stakeholders, we did that via the survey, including employee organizations representing each bargaining unit, parents and students to develop this policy to prohibit the use of Internet-enabled devices by students during the school day on school grounds. This policy aims to ensure that students remain focused on their academic responsibilities throughout the school day, which includes all instructional, non-instructional periods such as homeroom, lunch, recess, study halls, and passing time. So I just want to point out to you that this policy does not permit use of Internet-connected devices in any way, shape, or form during during the school day, okay, during the academic school day. And again, this policy was part of the recent budget adoption from New York State. I agree. For purposes of this policy, the following definitions apply: Internet-enabled devices mean and include any smartphone, tablet, smartwatch, or other device capable of connecting to the Internet and enabling the user to access content on the Internet, including social media applications. There are some exclusions here. Internet-enabled devices does not include non-Internet-enabled devices such as cellular phones or other communication devices not capable of connecting to the Internet or enabling the user to access content on the Internet, so the pre-smart smartphone type of cellphone. Internet-enabled devices supplied by the district are that are used for educational purposes are permitted. School day is the school day. School grounds means anywhere on the school grounds, so if our phys ed classes go out to the turf for class, that's still considered part of school grounds and part of the instructional Students may be authorized, and this is an important caveat here because there are there are some some issues that that really are pertinent for our student body. Students may be authorized to use an Internet-enabled device during the school day on school grounds if authorized by a teacher, principal, or the district for a specific educational purpose or necessary for the management of the students' students' health care. And for instance, there we have we have some students that monitor their their health issues such as diabetes with their cell phones, right? So they'll be permitted to continue to be in their possession in the event of an emergency, if they're being used for translation services. And this one's interesting: on a case-by-case basis, upon review and determination by a school psychologist, school social worker, or school counselor for a student caregiver who is routinely responsible for the care and well-being of a family member. So for instance, if we have a young person who maybe lives with a with a grandparent or or a parent that that has some some physical limitations and whatnot, and so their their constant communication or the ability to constantly communicate is a little different than the norm, then then there we'd be able to allow an exception there, okay? Also, Internet-enabled devices that are included, their use is included on a student's IEP or 504 plan, okay? The next section, we were permitted to modify a bit. Everything that I've read to you previously is a policy that was provided to us again via legislation. So our modification is in terms of storage, and the first sentence there says students must store their Internet-enabled devices in their assigned student locker. We're going to talk about that in a couple minutes. Additional secure storage areas will be located in the school's main office. We'll talk about that also. The designated onsite storage areas must be easily accessible, et cetera, et cetera. That's boilerplate language there. Moving on to methods for for parents to contact students during the day, again, some modifications here to accommodate necessary communication. Parents or persons in parental relation may use the following method to contact their students: the school phone. Parents or persons in parental relation may call the school's main office or attendance office, and the office staff can relay a message to the student or call the student to the office to speak with their parent or person in parental relations. We'll talk about that in a second as well. Written notes, a parent can drop off a note and staff will will contact that student and share that note with the student. In terms of student discipline, students will not are we are prohibited from suspending a student solely for accessing Internet-enabled devices in violation of the policy, and then we're required to post it as per other policies. And this one's a little different. A year from September and every year thereafter, we have to publish an annual report detailing enforcement of the policy within the prior year and the details that go along with that. We don't have to do that for any other policy to my knowledge, so that one's a little bit interesting. So before I move on to discussing the survey, any questions about that policy as written?
So one question, so travel to both seats.
Yeah, so that we're going to we're going to talk about that for sure, right? Because that's an interesting caveat, and it did come up in the comments from 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 parents.
Okay.
And I and I think that's a good, and I want you to make sure I come back to that, Mr. Soffin, because the the procedure, right, the procedure is important because we can get into procedures that are just untenable.
I agree.
So let's go to let's go to that survey, if you will. And this is it, this is included in your board packet. We had 268 responses to the survey. You can see that just over 78% were parents. The next highest group were 12.3% teachers, which is roughly, I think, 36 or 39. I think it's 36 teachers responded to the survey. The vast majority were aware of the policy. Scroll, keep scrolling for me there. 82% said they were aware. The next question about the potential benefits really weighs on being less distraction at 154. The next highest category was no benefit. And that 68 number is pretty consistent through the survey for people who simply just don't agree with it, okay? You'll see other things in there: increased social interactions, less bullying, positive mental health, which is really what this what this legislation was geared toward toward is helping our young people be better, we'll say, consumers are spending less time consuming social media and thus and the issues that go with it. When it came to storage, you can scroll there for me. Over, you know, there were only two options given, or in school lock, school locker or lockable pouches, and then other, and school locker was the overwhelming winner, followed by the lockable pouches, and then, you know, backpack, which backpack in and of itself is not permissible because they can't be in possession of them. Student vehicle, leave at home, disagree, disagree with the law, et cetera. Scrolling down to what's the best way to communicate, a little bit all over the board there, I imagine we will have a variety of ways to communicate, not only the policy, but the changes in the code of conduct and then the procedure, which will be specific to each building. How can we, you know, what's the best way to to contact for you to contact your student? Call the main office, call the attendance office? Again, those were were given as as examples, and then a smattering of other things. The comments here, and they're again, they were provided to the board. This is not the totality of the comments in this section, they were just the ones that seemed to be the most reoccurring. You know, a sustainable option that allows parents access to their students when needed and not something that leaves phones uncovered for lunch breaks, et cetera, et cetera. So there was a lot of of comments, both in this section and and the question seven responses about how's your staff really going to handle this, which I which I actually appreciated You know, and then, you know, going three down, many times I update him on sports practices, et cetera, by text during the day, unless you can assure me the coaches will be providing us with schedules at least 24 hours prior that my child needs access to his phone. So again, there's a lot of angst about the meal, your, you know, from family procedures, I should say, and how are we going to do 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 this now and you're taking away something from us that's been working? And I understand that is, you know, as a parent and a superintendent, I understand that schedules change and families need to communicate. Email my son directly, which currently is not allowed, and that is correct. Back in, I think, 2018, we do not allow emails from outside the school district, meaning, you know, locally here. I don't mean, when I say school district, I mean within our our Google family. Am I saying that right, Brandon here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we not we not allow outside emails to students. Allowing individual parent emails into the system seems almost impossible, and then would give that parent access to every student in our in our district. So for instance, Mrs. Delapone, you have children in the district, we couldn't limit your your ability to just communicate with with your students, you could communicate with everybody, okay? And I wouldn't have any problem with you doing that, but I don't know everybody, I don't know everybody in the district. So that's an issue, and I don't know that's an issue we can overcome. You know, so that's really it for for that section. And then moving on to the responses from question seven, and I I have a printout here and there, there are like probably 10 pages of comments. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I just want to highlight a couple of things because I think it really speaks to what the concerns are. You know, concern about a reduced sense of security because there's not direct communication. Over and over again, and I'm sure this didn't come from the teachers who answered, it came from the parents', but this is the same policy include teachers and employees. You know, how come, you know, are they going to be able to check messages between classes? What happens in what happens in an emergency? You know, the current the current procedures, particularly at the middle of high school, work well, why do we have to change these? I happen to agree with that, but the law is the law. I want to be able to communicate with my kids and I have to worry about calling the office. You really should bring the student body in as partners, even kids are great, and working with them will go a long way. I agree. This one's about my my child has medical needs, how do we handle that? Well, we we know that there's a nuance in the law that allows us to work with that child directly. I worry about the management of of parents wanting to communicate with their children and the staff having to be the middleman. I agree. Yonder pouches are a bad idea, they're expensive, makes kids feel like they're in a prison or in case of emergency. I think this is wonderful, I hope it is, I hope it is enforced. There's a lot of comments about consistency of enforcement. Also be important that students see teachers and staff adhering to this policy. Once a logical plan is designed, again, that's that's our procedure and needs to be enforced with no exceptions, et cetera, et cetera. There's talk about lockers in here and how lockers won't work if students are carrying their backpacks. Going to talk about that in a second. As students are responsible for self-storage in lockers, backpacks, or other bags should not be permitted in the classroom. Again, that's procedural stuff. There needs to be a plan in place for what happens when a student has or uses a phone, of course, needs to be consistent, policy needs to be consistent or won't work. That's another medical one. And then it talks about coaches and the communication and what to do there. So, you know, outside of the folks who said, I simply don't agree with the policy, I can sum up that that the other comments really are about procedure and what are we going to do to make sure that communication is as good as it can be, right? We have some great options. Many, many teachers, particularly at the elementary level, use the Remind app or use ClassDojo. I've already spoken with Mr. Iwanko about how coaches are going to need to adopt a means to communicate with students and and parents, not through their cellphone, not directly through their personal cell numbers, but through one of those apps, particularly because we know we know schedules can change. But let me take a break here and ask if there's any questions from the board at this point.
You brought up the Remind app. Can students access the Remind app through their Chromebooks?
Brandon, did you, yes, they can. Thank you.
Because I know our, like, at least a lot of the sports team has gone to the SportsU or, I can't remember, and which is an app on a cellphone, but yeah, they can, the Remind app works on a Chromebook, that's good. And, you know, maybe the coaches can just call in the school and tell Jay, like, hey, we changed things, and an announcement can be made. Because, yeah, I, as as a parent with kids in sports, that happens all the time. We're texting our kids, oh, this changed, or this, or, you know, your baseball parents, oh, baseball got canceled, they're going here now, but my kid didn't know, so, all right.
You're you bring up great examples. We need to make sure that our coaches, our teachers, our administrators, our counselors, you know, the superintendent, me, that we are all improving in our communication skills and and how we're how we're communicating, because it's been easy, right? Cell phones are make things make communication very easy, but there's a downside to that communication, too. I I read a lot about, I think there's going to be families that are really going to struggle with the adjustment of not being able to communicate with their child whenever they want. And that's that's an issue, and we're going to have to help them adjust. I also think, and this is an opinion, and I apologize if I offend anyone, that we're going to be okay, and it's okay to not be able to communicate with your child every minute of the day. There is, and I know there are there are horrible things that happen in all walks of life, but schools still remain very, very, very safe places, right?
Jeff, I would just add along those same lines, yeah, I mean, it doesn't really matter if we agree or disagree, this is the rule, and we can say we mispractice because, you know, coach can blame the texting or a kid can blame the texting, but the reality is, these are the rules that we've been given, and we will find a way to overcome, and that and it's critical that parents, students, coaches, teachers, don't make an excuse for this. This is, here's, here's the card you're dealt, we'll figure out a way around it. And saying that you disagree with the policy is not a way around it.
Well said.
Another quick question. I see a comment said something about bringing back the payphone. If a student needs to get a hold of a parent during the day, is there a phone they can use?
Sure, and and there, and, you know, this has nothing to do with the policy, it's just been the practice in this building. There's a phone in in the middle of high school main office that that students use. Absolutely.
I mean, the opinion is there are 700 other districts in New York State are going through this, so it's not like we're lone wolf that's gone out and done this. It's, you know, every parent in in New York State is going to have to deal with it, so.
Good point.
And.
I'm going to open up a flip phone stand right outside the office here, I think.
Jack, flip phone. I think I'll do all right.
Oh, yeah, yep, only public schools. Don't get me on that tangent right now. So let's talk about storage solutions, right? And I and I can tell you, this was not a confidential survey, and anyone who took the survey submitted their their email address, so it was easy for me to try and sort out, you know, parent issues from from teacher issues or the few students that that and community members that answered. There's concern about lockers being the the sole source of storage, okay? And that really is connected to students carrying their backpacks. I've already had conversations with the with with Mr. Savoni and Mr. McDonough about you're going to need to address this, and students storing their their cellular devices, their Internet-connected devices in their backpack and being possession, their their backpack is a violation of this law and and this policy. So there's going to be some adjustments there, and I will let them, at a future date, talk about procedure and changes to the code of conduct, because remember, this is the first read, and the policy will will not be up for adoption until the reorganization meeting in July, okay? And by the way, I'm going to say this, this is a shorter window for for policy than usual, and that is because the state thrust upon us very strict guidelines of when the policy needs to be in place, and that's by August 1st. And they did this even though they adopted the budget at the latest date in the past 15 years. And this legislation came came along with 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 the budget adoption. So we adjust and we do what we need to do. After the reorg adoption, should this board choose to adopt this policy, and my advice to you is you don't have a choice, then Mr. Savoni, Mr. McDonough, and Mr. Iwanko and I will have a discussion about, and along with Mrs. LaRosa and other administrators, but this is really a secondary issue for us, because K through 5 students have not been able to be in possession of these types of devices for quite a long time, and it hasn't been an issue. We'll talk about what kind of addendum we'll need for the code of conduct, which, by the way, you're adopting the code of conduct tonight because we have to, but then there's going to be addendum because we have to, and and what that what that may look like. So I'll give them a little bit more time to sort out those procedures. But I want to talk about the yonder pouches a little bit, because that that seems to be something people are interested in. And I had, I've talked with a number of superintendents and a number of teachers who have experienced yonder pouches, and I can tell you unequivocally, they're a waste of money and they don't work. And I apologize to the yonder people, but we're not buying them. They start out working really well, but you have to think about what this procedure would look like. It's great, we have homerooms, okay, so students would go to their first period homeroom, they would take out their their devices, their watch, their phone, whatever it is, they put it in the pouch, they'd lock it up. But at some point, that pouch needs to be unlocked at the end of the day. And so if the pouch stays in homeroom, what if that teacher doesn't have a ninth period class? Or if someone else is there, where's the key? What if the key gets lost? What if they go on Amazon and buy the key themselves, which they can do? So the experience that's been shared with me is for the first few days, the pouches are filled with phones. After that, the claim is, we didn't bring a phone in, I didn't bring a phone in. There's even one creative student who actually, this is pretty funny, actually, I love the creativity of youth when they don't like the rules, made a bar of soap look like a phone, and that's what he was putting in the in the pouch. And the pouch is break. So I don't see how logistically we could maintain the school day that we have, not lose instructional time, get on get on the buses at the end of this day so that we can pick up on time at at the elementary and the GLP by going back to homeroom or wherever it is to unlock these pouches. I just think it would be, it would be a very short-lived success, that would lead to other problems. The other thing I want to say is the procedures that we've already had in this building, I believe, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, have worked really well. We have great kids. I I'm in this building probably more than others, other than the E, because that's where my my office is, and I see them in the hallways, and our our students, there are students who are looking at their phones in between class, but it's not the majority. They're actually communicating with each other, they're all hunched over because they have 450 pounds of, I don't know what, in their backpacks. So I don't think it's going to be the same difficulty with our students as maybe what some other districts might be facing, okay? Other questions?
But if a student didn't put their phone in their locker and they carried it in a backpack or in a hoodie or whatever, but they didn't pull it out, we're not searching backpacks and we're not searching pockets and we're not, so I'm not certain that we should spend a whole lot of time, and and even if you get caught with it, there's no real ramification to it, anyway.
Well, yes and no. So you cannot suspend a student simply because they used a device, okay? And you know, the the other component that I did put in the policy is there will be lockable storage available in the main office, and that's for two reasons. So if a student doesn't trust their locker, but they know it needs to be locked up, we have a spot where it can be locked up, and it's not sitting in, you know, one of one of our principals desks or on a secretary's desk, it's locked up. The other reason for that is we have a student who's simply not complying with what the rules and regulations are, okay, well, then you need to come into the office first thing every morning, and we're going to lock your phone up. And and, you know, and if you violate that, that can be considered insubordination. Insubordination is a suspendable offense, but we don't want to go down that road. We don't suspend a lot of students. We don't want to start suspending a lot of students. We want our students to be our partners with this, and it's really designed to help them, you know, focus on their studies, have those peer relationships and, you know, the positive things that that are the background of the policy.
I think the biggest problem is going to come from the parents once all is done.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a tough adjustment.
Yeah.
I do. I do.
I'm going to say I totally think you're right, because I have asked my kids about it, and they're like, honestly, we don't even use our phones. And that's why my middle schooler, Mr. Savoni, when they do really stupid games at lunchtime, I'm like, I wish you guys were playing on your phones, because they think it's fun as 13-year-olds to let's punch each other's hands. So so they're not using their phones, they're doing dumb things instead, but still, they're not using their phones, so I agree with you. I don't think it'll be a huge adjustment for these kids. And I've been in the halls, too, like, I've been in the school during the day, and kids are not down on their phones, they're, I don't see kids on their phones, they're up, they're chit-chatting with each other, they're talking with teachers, so I think, yeah, our district will be fine.
Well, and I know just from the student representatives that have come during this current school year, there seems to be, like, with student council and stuff, a lot more activities, bringing the kids together, so they're actually face-to-face, you know, making bracelets, making cards for the nursing homes and things like that. And, you know, I agree, I think it'll be a harder adjustment for parents. And, um, you know, I agree, I think it'll be a harder adjustment for parents. No offense, but you know, they're, than it would be for kids. Cause I think for the most part, kids, once they are in school, they're not, you know, on their cell phone all the time. And the office, you know, I, I'm old, but in third grade, we had a, a death in the family and parents called the office, I'd get, share a lot of class and they came and picked me up and on my way. So it's not like you can't be connected to your kid. It's just not, can't be connected to your kid the way you'd like to be. But that's also not a bad thing. That's all.
I agree. Do you have any comments?
Honestly, I think the second groups is going to have the toughest time as a, as a teachers.
Probably.
Well, you gotta, you gotta leave what you want to see, right? But that, you know, teachers are not included in the policy, let's be clear about that. Uh, they're also not included in the legislation, but there's best practice too, so. We will leave that discussion for another time as well. Anything else before we move on to the next policy?
That we'll have to impose next week, right?
Well. Funny that you should say that, Mr. Sav, and so as we move on to the maximum temperature for school buildings, indoor facilities, this does not go into effect until September 1st of 2025.
So the 390 degrees next, next week aren't going to count?
No, they are not.
Okay.
Um, this is, um, this is also a first read for this policy. I want to, I'm going to read through this again in similar fashion to the last one. And then we're going to talk about what it is and what it isn't, okay? So the district is responsible for addressing health, safety and comfort of students and staff on extreme heat conditions days. For purposes of this policy, the following definitions apply. Extreme heat condition days mean when occupiable educational and support services spaces are 82 degrees Fahrenheit or higher. Room te- temperature means the temperature measured at a shaded location, three feet above the, the floor near the center of the room. Support services spaces do not include kitchen areas in the preparation for food and consumption by students. So that does not mean kitchens or cafeterias. Implementation plan when the temperature reaches 82 degrees Fahrenheit. The district is required, and I'm really shocked that I'm reading this to you, that this is actually policy. Is required to take action to relieve heat related discomfort when the occupiable educational support services spaces temperatures reach 82 degrees Fahrenheit. These actions may include, but are not limited to turning off the overhead lights, pulling down shades or blinds, turning on fans, opening classroom doors and windows to increase the circulation if permitted. Turning off unusual, unused electronics that produce heat and providing water breaks. Of course. Uh, air conditioners where available may also be used to keep room temperature from reaching 82 degrees. The district will take the actions above earlier in the day or before school starts in an effort to keep the room temperature below, below 82 degrees. So Mr. Sitzman and I have already had conversations that we, we know it's, it's a, it's going to be a cool morning, but it's going to heat up through the day. Let's get those second store, second floor windows, uh, uh, open before the staff gets here. And some of our staff, uh, arrived pretty early, so they're going to be encouraged to open them on their own. Just to get some air circulation and I, and Mike has already talked about, uh, making some changes with our air handling systems as well. This does not prohibit using air conditioning response to students, uh, individual education plan. We do have some students that, that do require air conditioning based on their IEP or their section 504 plan or, or documented medical needs. So that's not really, you know, that's, if it's going to be 82 or less than 88, then open the windows, turn a fan on. This is where it gets interesting. Implementation plan when temperature reaches 88 degrees. The district will, will remove students and staff from educational and support services spaces when the room temperature reaches 88 degrees Fahrenheit where practicable. The superintendent or designee may direct building principals to evacuate the space by moving students and staff to cooler spaces within the school building. Or closing school early and sending students and staff home according to district's emergency school closing policy. And our procedure which include communicating with parents and persons in parental relation, and we just talked about communication a minute ago. The board will consider the anticipated number of extreme heat condition days when adopting or adjusting the district's school calendar. The district will also be mindful of collective bargaining agreements. So this is all boilerplate language, there's nothing that, that we're able to adjust on this. But where practicable, quite frankly, came for, from significant advocacy from the New York State School Superintendent's Association, the New York State School Board Association. Probably from ASBOY organization, I'm sure from the facilities organization as well. Because where practical means if you can move them to a cooler place, you should. If you don't have a cooler place to move, move classes to, then you don't need, you don't have to. We don't have a lot of cooler, cooler spaces in our buildings. We have this library, uh, we have the cafeteria, um, and really not too many other spaces. Couple here or there.
Auditorium.
Um, the auditorium. So in the, in Eden Elementary, we have the auditorium. We have the auditorium. At GLP. We don't have any place. The board will, pardon? The computer lab, the computer lab, yeah, okay, so we have a computer lab. So where practical is a pretty important word. Because it's, it's just not practicable in, in, in many instances, okay? Closing school early and sending students and staff home. What are we sending them home to? You know, if it's 88 degrees here, are we sending them to air conditioned homes? Are we sending them to, to homes that maybe, you know, their, their parent or guardians now have to leave work? And, and for what? The last piece about adjusting our district calendar to essentially, uh, account for heat days, for extreme heat days. Well, in our part of the state, we already have to account for extreme cold days and snow days. And to add heat days with, you know, with, with contr- and, and being mindful of collective bargaining agreements, we have limits on how many days we can schedule. I have no, I have no concept of how I could build you a calendar that included the number of snow days that we've used the last couple of days and included a few days in there in case it gets really hot. We use five snow days this year and I will tell you it was by a stroke of dumb luck that I, I had scheduled five snow days. I think I'm, I'm poor at counting because I, I meant to have four, so we had five, we got a little lucky there. So I say this to you because we've had long conversations, um, at our facilities committee meeting, uh, about what can we do to start to incorporate, uh, pockets of air conditioning in, in our buildings? And I, and listen, I've said to the staff, I know I work in a climate controlled environment. I want to provide air conditioning for all our instructional spaces. I simply don't have the $53 million to do that. So, you know, in terms of our, you know, our, our propositions as we, as we look forward, I think we should continue to consider how we can, we can, you know, take some, some, uh, facilities action to mitigate some of the hotter spots in, in, in our buildings.
Is, is there a policy or anything on whether a teacher could bring in an AC type thing for their room individually?
Yeah, they can't.
They can't?
No.
Okay.
Um, they're not, they're not permitted, well.
It's not.
They should not be bringing in personal, uh. Appliances, okay? Other comments about heat mitigation?
So what time do we have to have the students and staff here until it's considered a full school day or counts towards the? I mean, cause most of the time if it's going to get warmer, it's going to be at noon or so. So I mean.
Whatever, whatever.
So like 10, 10:30?
I think so.
Okay.
Think so.
So I mean, worst case scenario, how, how often is it going to be 88 degrees at 10:30 in the morning?
Yeah, true.
We'll, we'll find out next week.
Right, yeah, we will. We will. Other comments or questions?
Uh, I was just going to say, I remember when my oldest was in kindergarten, he came home sick. Realized he was just dehydrated because he didn't have a water bottle. But I think if it's hot, the best, like, just let's provide the classrooms with some ice water. You know what I mean? Like, that's a, you know, if you're hot, or if you're hydrated. You know, you're not going to feel those effects either as much.
So it's, it's important for me for the board to understand that this policy does not mean if it gets 88 or above, that we're evacuating buildings. That we're closing school, that we're sending everyone home, okay? Cause that's not practicable. Any other comments or questions? How about you, young man, anything on this one? I, I wish I could have you say that again and a lot louder, but I heard you, so thank you. So, and listen, I, I have to say this. This is a mandate from the state with no money behind it. So if it was that important, fund it. And don't fund us $53 million. I know that's an obnoxious number, but that's what it would take to, to, to provide, provide air conditioning across the district. Fund something, you know, tell, tell us, you know, pick out your 10 hottest spaces and, and help, and help us, you know, mitigate the heat in those spaces. There's a little bit of funding, 13.5 million dollars across the state for the internet device, uh, 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 policy. But 13.5 million dollars across the state is really, really not a lot and as a district that's average needs, we probably wouldn't get a dime of that anyway. So that's our first reads for those two policies, which was a lot of fun for me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
At this point in time, it's the approximate position in time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Okay.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of teacher aide Kathy Franklin be accepted effective June 25th, 2025. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Franklin for her 26 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Deborah Holsher be accepted effective June 17th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Diane Strong be accepted effective June 20th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of certified occupation therapy assistant Jessica Perkins be accepted effective June 25th, 2025. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Perkins for her four years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of special education teacher Sarah Myers be accepted effective June 30th, 2025. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Meyer for, Myers for her two years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Do I read both of these paragraphs? Oh, I guess. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following part-time teachers be reappointed for the 2025, 26 school year. Karen Basaki, part-time, point 74 FTE music teacher, effective September 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Salary is based upon masters plus 30 step 10. Jeffrey Perisanti, part-time, point 68 FTE business teacher, effective September 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Salary is based upon ETA contract master step 9.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed as summer employees effective July 7th, 2025 through August 15th, 2025. I apologize if I mispronounced the name. Michelle Falkite's teacher, Thomas Wall teacher, Madison Woodard teacher, Phoebe Canisto teacher, Matthew Hyer teacher, Grace Sippos teacher. Jessica Walsh Leger, occupational therapist, Jennifer Tomasulo, physical therapist, Jenny Rocco, registered nurse. Judith Rizone, teacher aide, Elaine Funk, teacher aide, Rachel Kerr, teacher aide, Melinda Mossop, teacher aide, Rebecca Lape, teacher aide. Hannah Tomasulo, teacher aide, Cheryl Dunmire, teacher aide, Nicole Baldelli, teacher aide, Tina Wrigley, teacher aide. Alexa Couple, teacher aide, Alicia Plummer, teacher aide, Lori Couple, teacher aide, Maura Wellington, teacher aide. Kelly Nose, teacher aide. Kaylin Janowski, teacher aide, Jennifer Carriero, psychologist. Antoinette Backert, psychologist, Darlene Smith, registered nurse for bus, Sarah Smith, registered nurse for bus, Mary Maxon, summer school principal.
Second.
Very well done, Cheryl.
I hope I did them all right, so.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed as summer substitutes, effective July 7th, 2025 through August 15th, 2025. Darlene Necker, teacher, William O'Hara, teacher, Hayden Carter, teacher and teacher aide. Lisa Addy, teacher and teacher aide, Christina Billeter, teacher, Amber Clausen, teacher and teacher aide. Kristin Jenko, teacher and teacher aide, Michelle Ross, teacher, Kelsey Hunter, teacher aide, Amanda Shamira, teacher aide. Melissa Bartu, teacher aide, Isabel Hubert, teacher aide, Brittany Dykman, teacher aide, Kristen Archangel Daffeldecker, teacher aide and Shannon Locking, teacher.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Michael Gerwitz be permanently appointed as a mechanic, a maintenance mechanic effective July 6th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Jay Appolito be permanently appointed as a bus mechanic effective July 27th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Amanda Pachinski be permanently appointed as a secretary to the superintendent and district clerk effective July 30th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
I think we should.
How long was probationary period?
It doesn't seem like it was long enough.
Any, anything else lost during this probation period?
We could table this if you want.
No.
So I do, I just say real quickly, you know, um, we're joking, of course. Because it seems like Amanda's been in this position for an incredibly long, long period of time. And part of that is because she's had a great mentor and who continues to support her and her own professionalism. Um, she's been a real joy to work with. She's somehow figured out a way to keep me in line, although she asks me questions at the wrong time on occasion, so we're going to work through that. But it's been, um, a much better transition than I could ever have hoped for, for, for my work and for your work as board members as well. Thank you.
It's been pretty seamless.
Yeah, good job. I just have to learn how to say her name the right way, that's all. She does this, then I'm like, oh, chin, 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 okay.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Miles Coleman be appointed for summer technology cleaner, effective July 7th, 2025 and ending August 29th, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Ashley Momerts, who is initially certified in math education, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the math tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2025. for a probationary period commencing on September first, twenty-twenty-five and ending on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight, unless extended in ordinance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section thirty-twelve of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to the Section thirty-twelve D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master's step ten.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Congratulations. Welcome back to Eden.
Next, okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Rebecca Morris, who is initially certified in math education, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the math tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September first, twenty-twenty-five and ending on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine, unless extended in ordinance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section thirty-twelve of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section thirty-twelve D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master's step ten.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Someone give us a clap? Motion carried. Welcome back to Eden.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Rachel Braun, who is initially certified in art education, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the art tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September first, twenty-twenty-five and ending on August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-nine, unless extended in ordinance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section thirty-twelve of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section thirty-twelve D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract master's step fourteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Welcome... Welcome back.
All right, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revised district code of conduct be approved effective June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. We'll be back at this sometime in the near future.
Yeah.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Ed hereby approves the Geotech bid awarded to Kostic in the amount of fifty-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the Geotech bid awarded to ECS New York Engineering in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby approves the proposal for architectural services bus garage emergency lift project in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yay!
Can we bring him to every meeting?
Any opposed? Any abstained? Oh, you abstained? We're good? Motion carried.
Next, we have the business report.
All right, I will just keep this pretty brief. Just want to let everyone know that we are coming up on the end of the fiscal year, so the twenty-four, twenty-five year ends on June thirtieth. So the business office is pretty busy right now trying to get ready for our annual external audit, which will begin this summer, and then getting ready for the next fiscal year, which starts on July first.
When's our first audit meeting? Sometime July or August?
Yeah, it'll happen probably in July. They're gonna come on site the first week of August.
Okay.
Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of quick notes. This is the time of year where we have, you know, celebration after celebration after celebration. And it's so fun from my perspective, you know, seeing the students at Field Day today and the foam party that they tried to get me to join, but I was, you know, in my suit, so I chose not to. And the dunk tank is available for the board after the meeting. Jack, I think you're first up. But I say this just because it's, you know, the thought that the school year winds down is a complete misnomer. The school year winds up, and then it stops. And we're still in that wind-up stage right through next Thursday, which is graduation. And I just want to share just how much I appreciate the efforts of our staff to make sure that these days are memorable for our students, beyond just what we're teaching them, but the experiences that they're having as well. One other thing I want to point out is, you know, congratulations to Amanda. You certainly have a difficult path to follow since Barb was just honored last week at the Erie County Association of School Boards for her work as district clerk and how influential she was not only locally in Eden, but across the network of district clerks. And it was fun celebrating her once again, right? But you have twenty-four years to get there, so don't worry if you're not nominated in the next five or ten years, okay? Twenty-four years. Other than that, I do want to mention that the work on the Eden Elementary roof has begun in earnest. So they've been working on tear-off. They were off today to accommodate Field Day. And weather permitting, they'll be at it all day tomorrow, since tomorrow is not... Tomorrow's actually a school holiday. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Next, student report, Daniel Shunk. You are in fact Daniel, right? Because sometimes somebody else shows up and I don't...
Yeah, no, I'm Daniel. All right, so for May, we had a Teacher Staff Appreciation Week, May fifth through May nine. And then Just Say Hello was on Tuesday, May thirteenth. We painted clay pots that we will plant flowers in and donate to both nursing homes in Eden and East Eden. And a thank you to Zittles Farms for donating the plants. And on May fifteen, we had our Unified Basketball Game against Orchard Park on Thursday. And Powderpuff Game was Friday, May twenty-third. And the middle school band and orchestra went to Darien Lake on Friday, May twenty-third. And the Kids' Day Bison Game on Thursday, May twenty-nine. And then moving to June, we had a Just Say Hello Again, where we planted the flowers and donated them to the residents of the Eden Rehab and Eden Heights. The residents were very thankful for the lovely gifts. And on Friday, June sixth, the sixth graders took a boat ride in the canal in Buffalo. And Friday, June thirteenth, eighth grade moving up day breakfast and a trip to Darien Lake. And Friday, June twentieth, senior trip to Darien Lake again. And that's all for June.
I'm really glad that you had to talk about all of those activities. I just had to say a couple of nice things. So thank you. And graduation's next Thursday at seven PM? Well, it is now.
Next, we have the board report roundtable.
I just, the activities you were talking about at the end of the school year, I just live like one block over, one street over. And of course, the weather has been fairly decent. But to hear the GLP Field Day and the kids laughing and yelling and hooting and hollering and having a great time was wonderful. I actually sat outside, just like, because I had my nephew for the day. So we, you know, and he kept going, where are all the kids? Where are all the kids? But yeah, it was, it's a great, kind of one of those sounds of summer, but sounds of the end of the school year that you puts a smile on your face, so that was great. And the thing that was on Facebook about the kindergartners going into the door and then the seniors coming out, I don't know, whoever came up with that idea was absolutely wonderful. Yeah.
So that was Carrie Reinhardt. She's our PR specialist from Bosse's. And her and Michaela Eddy, who's one of the clerical staff and district office, are now our tandem PR team. So you're seeing a lot more frequent posts because of that situation. And Carrie and I actually met yesterday to plan for our communication strategy next year to make sure that we're reaching the entire community, not just the folks who have kids in school. So we're gonna work on that over the summer. And she was incredibly excited because that video went viral. And apparently that means something.
Yeah.
I think it means a lot of people saw it. And she said what number it was, but I don't remember. But she was really excited that we went...
It was a great, creative thing. It was wonderful, yeah. So, kudos.
Mr. McDonough, I'm sorry to put you on the spot here, but I'm gonna go off of Cheryl's Facebook post, but I saw the seniors walking through the elementary school. I was amazed that there were very few girls. Is there a disproportionate number of boys to girls in the senior classes? Or just weren't most of the girls there that day? Okay, I know, I just, it looked very... Yeah. I know we've gone to the maroon gowns only now, but it was just interesting. I was kind of like, hey, where's the batch of ladies coming through? And... Yeah, I know, but I don't know. I was just, it was really interesting. It's something I noticed. I know it's a small class. I know it's a small, you know, smallest class we're gonna graduate, so... Okay. That's all I got.
All right, the reorganization and regular board meeting, Board of Education meeting Wednesday, July second, twenty-twenty-five, six PM. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, at six fifty-nine PM, the Board of Education and our executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.